You're trying to do it without, I've been working on it since you were all about that. I had the screen in March, so it was bigger.
My arm is getting too short.
I was doing that in the store the other day.
Okay, the date's six o'clock. I'll call to order this meeting of the Enfield Select Board on October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. And the first item on our agenda is a presentation tonight to Amanda Lewis of the Enfield Police Department for successfully completing the Leadership Trilogy, Supervisor Leadership Institute, Command Leadership Institute, and Executive Leadership Institute. I think the chief might like to say a few words.
I do. So as everybody knows, the Enfield Police Department is always striving to improve ourselves, and one of the best ways to do that is improve our leadership and our leadership skills. Officer Lewis spent over a hundred and twenty hours attending those three courses. This starts at the first-line supervisor level all the way up to the executive level. He's widely recognized across the country. FBI Leader Course is a staple of leadership training for executive positions all the way up to chiefs and even commissioners of large PDs attendance. So it's an easy course to complete. It takes several years, and it takes a lot of dedication and homework and follow-through. And she's brought back some, already brought back some good skills and ideas back to the PD that I think is going to be useful to everybody. So congratulations. On behalf of the board, I'd like to thank you very much for all the very fun. And also gets a pin that she can wear on her uniform that identifies to people that she's completed the FBI Leader Trilogy.
That's great.
That's how rare it is for people to complete the trilogy.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of October third, twenty twenty-two.
How many of us have the right of the print set?
No, second.
All those in favor? Aye. Next, we have Board Reports. Budget Committee had a very exciting time last meeting. We covered a lot of ground, and we'll be meeting again tomorrow to go over details of budget. And hopefully, I'll have a little more to say after that.
Planning Board had a meeting that didn't have a very long agenda, but it was a long meeting. And that is because the primary item on the agenda was zoning changes for inclusion on the town warrant. So of course, the topic came up. How we look at the work that's almost finished for master planning and take into consideration to do some maybe smaller pieces of zoning change in preparation to do a larger body of work down the road. So the majority of the meeting, I'd say, to be fair, probably was spent on the size of a parking space, which is trivial, but not, right? Because it's important at the end of the day to be able to have a reasonable-sized space and not to make it so somebody can't use their lot. So I think it was a good discussion. I've gone back to Rob to do some more research and get some more information, but we'll see. I think we're going to travel on warrant, you guys. And you were going to work on seeing what we didn't have to include in terms of printing all of the language and strike throughs.
Yeah, we had a, always makes me nervous when it's really long, because sometimes people will get grumpy.
Yeah, we need to look at what can go on there. We had a zoning change from the federal government. And it's seven pages long, and we're not going to, we don't want to print that whole thing.
And we have to do it in order to make sure that the people who live in flood zones can do a flood zone in turn. So I guess that's the other major people.
That's important.
So it does have to be included on the warrant in full, and it has to be posted at the polling place, but you can summarize on the ballot.
Oh, yeah.
The Heritage Commission has not met yet this month, so I'll report next month at our next meeting.
Any other Board reports? Town Managers Report.
Right, I have a pretty short report tonight as well. An updated staffing report. We have received multiple applications for our police officer position that we advertised for. Keith Olman's preparing for the physical fitness evaluations and continuing through the process. And he's, he's pretty confident that we'll have a few qualified candidates coming out the other side of the testing that we'll have to choose from. So we're excited to move through that process and look forward to who may be our new police officer. We also have been and are currently accepting resumes and cover letters for our Highway Superintendent position. As I announced to you a little while ago that Scott Johnston was going to be retiring, so we are looking at filling that position. We're reviewing resumes this week, but we did put on there that we'll continue accepting resumes and applications until the position's filled. With that, I have had questions from a couple groups on the sidewalks, the funding we had done for sidewalks downtown a couple of years ago at town meetings. Right now, we're waiting on that Federal Byways Grant Program. There's some sidewalks we were going to do in the same area that we put in that grant. So we're waiting to see if we get that grant. I was hoping we'd have that information by now, and we know. But if not, I have talked with Jim that coming into the next construction season, no matter what the grant situation is, we're going to, we're going to get some projects done. The Johnston Beach property, I just wanted to let the Select Board know that I did release the applications for volunteers today. So that should have went out on our media platforms. And I did email it directly to the three people that told me they were interested in serving on that committee. And I sent it to Rob and the Chair and Co-Chair or Vice Chair of the Master Planning Committee and asked them to distribute it to that. So we'll do that. I did set a date for November fourth, so we can discuss it at the November seventh meeting, as long as we have enough applications that come back. Just a little update on the community building roof. At the last meeting, I told you we were starting that project. That roof has been completed, so that, that project is done, and the roof looks very nice. And then I just wanted to reiterate that the town Halloween event, the primary event, will be the trunk-or-treat in trunk-or-treat and haunted house with some carnival games on Saturday, October twenty-ninth, from three to six P.M. You can contact Kevin Marker, the Recreation Director, for any information, or if you want to donate to that event, or have one of your cars to dress it up for trunk-or-treat. And then we will set aside some time on Halloween night from five to eight for trick-or-treating. The town's involvement in that is really going to be just helping to set those times, and then we're going to have a police officer that'll help direct traffic downtown. But there will be no town-sponsored event at that point. And that's all I have for Town Manager.
Thank you.
Where, just where is the the application?
Yeah.
I did not get that.
Oh, okay. I was like.
It's going up first thing in the morning.
No, that's fine. I just was wondering if I missed anything.
I didn't want to interrupt him.
No, it's fine.
And next up, under Communications, we have a resignation from the Old Home Days Committee from Misty Puddle, who's now joined Eva and has a bit much to do.
I make a motion, we accept this resignation with regrets.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Under Business, Methodist Hill Discussion Regarding Methodist Hill Property.
We talked about this a little bit last meeting. We didn't talk about the Methodist Hill property in detail, but I brought the properties before you, and you guys approved moving forward with the sale of these unless any committees or commissions wanted to keep it. The one property that did come back was the Methodist Hill property that the Conservation Commission thought that we should, we should keep this property. I gave you a little bit of information in your packet about the property itself, some information from our GIS site and the Natural Resources Inventory. Just tell you a little bit about it. There are some steep slopes, as the Conservation Commission has said, but along the road, there's, there's definitely twenty-plus, maybe even close to thirty acres of buildable land. So we can, we can have that discussion and talk through it. And I just need to know what you guys want to, want to do. If you want to move forward with sale of that land, we don't need to do anything except a motion to move forward with what we decided at the last meeting. And if you decide you would like to change your mind, then we can have a motion in that direction.
Can you remind me how we came to have this?
You know, the details?
Non-payment of taxes.
No, that's funny.
What was that land appraised at for tax purposes?
I don't have the exact number, but it was right around twenty-seven thousand dollars.
I note that the Conservation Commission has written a letter opposing that sale.
Actually, that twenty-seven thousand dollars is what they owed to us. It's not the assessed value.
Right.
From my recollection, it was anything above, beyond our cost, right? And that goes back to?
Anything above the taxes due and the fees associated with taking and selling the land goes back to this previous landowner.
So right now, the rest of our tax base is supporting that non-payment.
Where exactly on Methodist Hill is that lot?
I can pull it up. It's not very far after you make the turn and start heading back up the hill. So you go away from Whaleback, and it turns and starts to go up. And it's the fifth lot, huh? It's a little ways up there. There's a little Classics Road that juts off to the right in the middle of it, and it's right across from the farmland up there. That top map on the backside of here. And it shows if you can, it's highlighted, but when it's not in color, it's harder to see.
Comments?
I guess I have a couple couple of questions. I mean, so in reading the letter, I know we have some, some folks here that might be able to answer it, would be, what would be the value proposition for the town to continue owning it? Because there certainly are properties we own that are used for a variety of purposes. So what would be the function of the town owning this property versus putting it back into private hands? And I know that it was discussed at the last Conservation Commission meeting. And I looked at the minutes, and it wasn't particularly detailed. So I guess, I guess that's sort of the question of what's the value to the town to continue owning it versus bringing it back? And although you managed to discuss it.
Yes.
Lee Davis, I am a member of the Conservation Commission, but I'm talking in essence, we have people from the, who live near Methodist Hill who'll come all the way in tonight to add some comments, and I, and I hope they can be heard. They came all the way down here purposely to have their say. That's all.
And they're Enfield residents?
Yes, they live right out, they live right next door to that land.
So someone like to introduce themselves and make a comment?
Sure. Good evening. My name's Harrison Drinkwater, and my wife, Betsy Drinkwater, is here with me.
Aye.
We've, it's interesting to hear us described as being so far away that we'd make a special trip. I would appreciate the chance. As a matter of fact, we could roll a marble from our house into Sullivan County. And that gives you an idea of where we are in terms of the borders of Enfield. My wife and I moved to Methodist Hill in nineteen seventy-four, and we raised our kids there. And we live in the same house since seventy-four. And the great privilege of living on Methodist Hill is we've been able to hike throughout the woods and the lands that are under discussion right now. It just occurs to me that we've had this privilege because landowners have allowed us to be on their land, which is unposted. And in the last few years, I won't say the generosity has subsided, but certainly the posted signs have come up. And and so access to some of those fields and some of those areas are more restricted now. And I appreciate the fact that Enfield, two or three years ago, made it clear that that McAllister Road, which is the Classics Road, stayed open. So that's our access point to that, that field. It just, it seems to me that the Conservation Commission has made a logical question of, are there valuable purposes for conservation, for wildlife, for recreation, or even a town forest that might be explored by the Select Board before it commits it to sale? And I kind of like that proposition. And my wife and I hiked that land this afternoon. I come away with the old Joni Mitchell song, which is, "You don't know what you got until it's gone." And I kind of like to know what we have before it goes.
Thank you very much. Other comments from the public in attendance?
Yes.
I'm also on the Conservation Commission. I just think, I like to echo what Harrison said. It's, it's a beautiful piece of property. It does have some grade, but it's mixed hardwood, and it's, it's a really good wildlife habitat, which has the potential, especially on Methodist Hill, which is a unique area. It's higher elevation, so it's totally unique from the rest of Enfield. And I think having the opportunity to conserve land in a unique environment like that is an opportunity that we, we'd be really good to explore. As Harrison said, possibly a town forest with the potential for developing more trails to cut through there. I just think it has potential as a nice, nice spot in a unique place upon Methodist Hill.
Thank you. Other comments? Yes.
Just to add, that would, that would the development plans of the town, so on and so forth. That would be very good, Methodist Hill, and for the development potential if it was kept, recreation, so on and so forth. The Whaleback is a whole nother story, but you know, this is, might be very fruitful to what our goals are. And I just want to add, I read in the minutes about everybody getting a notice of this, this property. And the Heritage Commission, I checked with Meredith, she didn't hear anything about this being the sale. So I don't know if she got, she said no, so.
It was sent to her.
No.
Huh? It was sent to her.
Other comments on this topic? Mr. Teich?
I'm Dr. Teich, and I'm Chair of the Conservation Commission, and I certainly would like to echo what has been said before. But I also would like to see the Board of Selectmen halt their efforts to sell this, sell this property until there has been an adequate collection of information from the people on Methodist Hill and from Enfield as to what the property could be used for. We also would like to think about putting a warrant article up to create a town forest out of this property. Enfield does not have a town forest, and there are mechanisms provided for doing that through a referendum on town, on town meeting.
So how is, how is a town forest different than just a piece of land the town owns?
The difference is that the town forest can be utilized at times for timber harvesting that generates funds for the town. It also opens town, it provides the same opportunities as recreation. You can hunt in town forests, so the deer hunters would be not inconvenienced by that. People can hike through there. There's opportunities to make trails that can be maintained by what we also like to see as the development of a trail master for the town of Enfield. And these are the opportunities that don't come along very often with a hundred-acre piece of property available. And I think to sell it for development would be a mistake.
Thank you very much.
Robert.
Too big. We'll, we'll let you go, and then the chief.
Go ahead, please.
Okay. Lee Davis, Conservation Commission. Since you don't even know where the land is, I think it's worth you going and investigating. I've also heard that there might be some historic buildings or something they called Stonehedge, similar to an old foundation or something. I myself do not know the name. Sounds lovely, but I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you. Sir?
Roy Hall, I'm speaking as, not the chief, but as just a resident. I know that's weird for the new reformer, but just a quick question. How much land does Town of Enfield already own in conservation?
I don't know the answer to that.
I don't know it off the hand. The master plan does say that there's nearly eight thousand acres in town. I don't know how much of it that we own.
Yeah, very little of it is town-owned and controlled. The vast, well, the vast majority is state, and then the thousand-acre Shaker Hill Forest. And then there's a few relatively large parcels that private citizens have conserved of their own land.
And that's in the Land Trust, correct?
Well, however, one of them is, but some, some folks have each other Land Trusts, I believe, as well. And other conservation mechanisms, if my memory from the National Planning Group is the same. The one the town has is the one that Collette Brook is on, of substantial size. I think we might have a couple of really small ones, but that one's, remember, Dan, is that a hundred and fifty acres?
Which one?
The one that Collette Brook Trail?
Oh, yeah. It's like a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, that's about, so for folks in that part of town, it's on the scale of that. I guess my comments from listening would be that that is a relatively underserved part of town. And if there's an opportunity, like I think immediately of that property with the Collette Brook Trail on it. And I go there, and it's beautiful, and it's
Absolutely lovely.
A nice place. And if, if there's interest within town and an opportunity to do something similar for another part of town, then slowing down a bit and investigating that would make sense to me. I'm not really convinced, you know, I'm not going to commit one way or another on what to do, but I do think that investigating something of that nature would make sense if there's, if there's interest in an underserved part of town when it comes to our current recreational properties.
Do you have someone with a question online?
If I may.
We have someone online. I can't quite tell the name, but.
Hi, my name is Lucy Wilson, and I've lived on Methodist Hill my whole life. My husband, Michael Wilson, is here as well, and Joan Decato, who lives on the top of the hill, and my sister, Lori Decato. This parcel of land, it abuts the land that Patch owns, the thousand acres that have just recently been developed. And then Fieldstone, across the road, was also developed. That used to be a field when I was growing up here. And I just, I feel like it would be really nice to keep it in conservation and be able to have access for hikers, mountain biking, whatnot. I feel like there may be need for housing, but we can't just keep developing all the land. It's also really a great place for animals.
Any comments, you guys?
Nailed it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you have one other person?
And we have another person online who wishes to speak?
Hi, this is Jeanne Fay. I live off of, off of Methodist Hill on Atherton Road. And I would echo the other people that have spoken in that this is really a very nice piece of property with some historic ruins, you might say, along the Classics Road that we had, we used to access from our property before the patches put in their, their maple farm down below. And I also agree that those of us on this side of town would love to have a spot for walking and recreation. So I would urge you to take a better look at this property and make at least an informed decision about selling it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
May I add one more thing here?
One more.
If you look at the Natural Resources Inventory that the Conservation Commission put together in twenty twenty-one, on page seventy-two, there is Table Twelve, which lists the properties owned by the Town of Enfield in twenty twenty. So did you get a copy of that, Mr.?
No, I, I didn't. I'm good. I was just, it was just a question.
Well, you need to have a copy of this, I think.
I don't need it right now, though. We can talk later.
All right. I've got a box out.
Thanks for everything.
John, I, so I'm just looking, I'm just looking at the financials piece a little bit, because we've got twenty-seven thousand dollars in taxes that are owed. And roughly, I'd say, just over about forty-two hundred dollars a year, it might, the parcel would generate based on a value of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So we also have to look at lost revenue that we are passing back to all of the taxpayers and be cognizant of that, because, you know, this is, we would be marking the loss in the books forever.
I'm implying to agree with the position that we should look at this a little more carefully. I do think that portion of town, I drive by it a lot on my way to KUA, and it's, it's a lovely area, but it is not served by a lot of resources that the town affords them. We take care of the road, or pieces of the road, not all of it. It's amazing how the boundary goes back and forth going down that road. And I think we should look at it. And if, if the, if the cost issue is overriding, that's one decision. If the recreational naturalistic issues are overriding, there's another decision. We have to decide, how do we make that decision? How do we find out more about this piece of land? That's, that's my quandary. You know, I'm probably not in a position to go spend a week hiking around on it.
If I may answer Mr. Stewart's comment, the twenty-seven thousand dollars that the town has owed in back taxes can be made up relatively easily through a selective logging of the property and sale of the wood. I don't think that this is a financial issue that can't be resolved.
See, that's one of the things, yeah, that we could find out, right? By a little more study of the land. When was it last logged? What is the quality of the wood available? And logging, there's quite a bit of logging going on still, and.
And are you guys going to come and tell us, "Don't log it," because we'll hurt the birdies next? Because that's usually the next thing that comes down the pipeline is.
Well, I, I think if we do it, and if it's a town forest, part of the deal is it is available for logging.
Absolutely, absolutely. But remember how upset people were about Colette. That's, that's my concern, is that Colette got maintained, and people, people had an episode, so.
You may, you may realize also that selective logging does open habitat for a wide variety of different species of animals. So logging itself can actually improve the diversity of wildlife. It's not a matter of eliminating them.
So I agree completely.
Yeah, I don't think that we're the ones who.
Someone online wishes to make a comment?
Well, it's.
It's Lori Decato here from Methodist Hill. And I was just reiterating some of the other comments about just being careful in what we do with this kind of land and preserving this land on top of this mountain is pretty valuable. It would be a huge opportunity for the town and it's not just black and white dollars and cents. It's a lot more than that. And for instance, another person from out of state just moved in across from us. And we used to hike out to the top of Whaleback through an access road since I lived here since I was three. And he's got it posted and we can't go on that property anymore to the, it access to the top of Whaleback where my dad sold the land and to the people who developed Whaleback and brought the chairlift in. So it's just disheartening to see people buy up the land and then do these kinds of things. And it's a huge opportunity for the town more than just, you know,
Money.
Just the money and black and white dollars. So just those two cents.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm gonna take one last comment, Sheila.
I just wanted to say something about the logging. I just had somebody, my neighbor logging. He was from out of state. And the logger came in from another state. He just decimated the place. My neighbor wanted a view. And there was, and when I had talked to the logger, he was going to select cut. That did not happen. And so when some, it, it depends on you get a forester, not just a logger, you need a forester. And it's a great learning opportunity there if this was, if we were going to have a cut, that'd be selective cut, cut for the wildlife, different, you know, agenda. Be a learning opportunity for the people that come into the town to really appreciate their forests. And I see it also as a learning thing if we have that done.
Thank you. Okay. Where should we go with this?
If we want to pause and investigate, do we want to take action?
I don't, I don't think we need to take action at this time.
Okay.
We can just move forward and look into a few of the things I wrote down. If you guys have any, anything you want research done on, we can, we can definitely look at that. If you need it, I can either set up something or market or do something in a way where it's easier for, for you guys to find it. Be able to walk around, look at it, and we can look at a few different things if we want to bring in a logger or somebody to talk about how it could be developed, just so you have that information. We could look at that as well.
Yeah, I think especially where we, I think we would bring in a forestry team to take a peek at it and give us an estimate because not all of it's equal. So a clear cut yields a significant amount more, which obviously isn't, can respect the nature of what people are asking for. So we don't know what they would get out of a selective cut percentage wise. And it also is market dependent. So I don't think we can get too excited about offsetting costs there. I just want to be very cognizant that we, you know, overall have a lot of projects going on and people have been coming to these meetings and talking to us about how they're worried about costs and projects. And here we are considering something that we're going to push this amount back because this, this twenty-seven thousand dollars right now is shared across all of our tax base for non-payments. So I think, you know, we've gotten that feedback in other meetings and I want to be respectful of that kind of feedback as well. Certainly, I own a large parcel that I preserve myself, so I'm not opposed to preserving land. And I'd be interested in seeing the forestry plan, a forestry plan done. I think cutting for birds and wildlife makes sense. Is it a good location for recreation? I don't know. You know, it might be interesting to look at something like cross-country skiing if we're talking recreation or whatever up there. But I rely on you guys for the recreation component. But I, I don't want to acquire another piece of property for our portfolio to just sit there for nobody. I think that's the big thing we have to do. We have to start setting goals and looking at what we have in our master plan and ask ourselves, does this fit in line with what we see the future of our town being?
I think recreational opportunities, especially outdoor recreational opportunities, fit in well with the master plan. I do think if we go this route, there's going to have to be a group that manages this. And I think that goes along with having a town forest. And yeah, thank you very much, everybody. And we will pursue a study of this and really think about it deeply. So next up, we have a disposition of property on Johnston Drive.
Yeah, this was just a brief follow-up from the last meeting we had. We had a little discussion about the trailers that's out there.
Right, the trailer and the storage shed and.
I went ahead and added the two storage sheds on there. I'm purposely not asking for the two, I'll call them cabins that are down there. We did have that discussion, but if it would be okay with the select board, I would really like to look at getting rid of the trailer. And then I figured we would just add those two little sheds. I don't know if I'll do that right away or not, but having that authority now would be.
I think the sooner the better. Yeah, okay. You need a motion?
I would need a motion.
I'll make a motion to award the bid, oh no, sorry. Nope, no motion. I'll make a motion to authorize the town manager or their designated to dispose of property worth less than a thousand dollars on the Johnston Drive parcels. About a thousand dollars each.
Well, that. Yeah, there's a motion there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good God. I knew it was somewhere. I'm like, nope, wrong one. Okay, authorize the town manager to dispose of the trailer and two shed type storage structures located on town on property at the end of Johnston Drive at map fourteen lots three to six. And hereby authorize the town manager or their designated to take such actions and execute all documents that may be necessary.
A second.
All in favor?
What happens when I go between the computer and.
Next up, we have the award of geotechnical services, the public safety building.
Okay, this was not in your packet. So I handed this spreadsheet out that you can't read.
No.
But if you, if you look through that, we, we sent this geotechnical bid through Black River Designs, our public safety architects. And with the help of, it's very, not advanced, Engineering Ventures. We sent it to Miller Engineering, S W Coal, M W Soils, and then Geo Designs got it from our release. We didn't send it to them. We did get three of the bids back that were due back today. The two big things we were looking at in sending this bid out was, of course, cost. What's it going to cost us? And then how quickly could someone get to this? We're a little bit, I don't want to say behind schedule, but things got a little bit delayed moving out and trying to stay on our schedule. We need this geotech work done as soon as possible. So reading through this, the cost breakdown is pretty simple. Miller Engineering was fourteen thousand, four thirty-five. Geo Designs was fifteen thousand, four sixty, and then S W Coal there in the middle was eight thousand, five hundred. Miller Engineering said that they could do the work in three weeks and then it would take them another three weeks to get the report. S W Coal said four to five weeks to do the work and two weeks to do the report. So we're looking at about six weeks, no matter how we do this. So with that, I would make the recommendation that the select board award this bid to S W Coal Engineering. They can do the work in approximately six weeks as the other ones, and their cost was significantly less.
Makes sense.
I did talk with Black River Designs and William Chase today, and they also agreed that that was a good award.
And I'm sure you'd like a motion.
Now I can, now I can read the one from the computer that I can actually see. I'll make a motion to award the bid for soil borings and geotech work to S W Coal Engineering perforated and hereby authorize the town manager or their designated to take such action and execute all documents that may be necessary.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Next, we have the warrant budget mailing discussion.
So we had this discussion a little bit after town meeting on kind of what we wanted to mail out in addition, where we don't well, mail the town meeting out anymore. So I just wanted to talk through that, make sure we knew exactly what the select board wanted to, wanted to send out. You know, everything we do is going to come with some sort of cost. What was the, do you have the estimate?
I did not get an estimate for that particular project. It's about twelve to fifteen hundred dollars for the town report, so it's probably going to be less than that. However, postage was fairly high on the last three, the little booklet we mailed out. It's just a three-trifold mailer that was over five hundred dollars in postage. So until I know kind of what it is you're planning, you want to have sent out and it'll determine the cost that we come up there and put in the budget.
But the book was, the thick book was very expensive.
The, the thick book, well, for mailing is very expensive, but to print this, the small print job. It was about twelve hundred dollars last year, but the cost of printing and all of that is going up all the time. I don't have a quote for it.
You can't get out of a, even a short, a small card or mailer usually for under fifteen hundred bucks in Enfield. It's pretty hard. That's my experience, so. I'm in favor of printing like a warrant in the description and mailing it. And then referencing the full document online and placing it, like the school district places it in some of the local businesses if they're willing and in the library. And I think that's a really great option because you don't have to go to the town office, right? If you're in Proctors or Georgians, just or Jakes if they're willing, you know. I think you see them on a lot of counters places and the feedback we had gotten previously from the post office was that they were piling up and recycled them. So I hate to pay a bunch of money, kill a forest, and find out they all just want to direct recycle for the large copy. But I, I know we have to print some. I don't know what you guys think. I, I, I think a blend of short, online, full-size available as needed.
Yeah, so we want enough full-size available to, so that every, how many people usually come? We usually have a pretty good idea of that and make sure we have a copy for everyone. We're expecting people to share.
We do have it, we have it online and we, we brought, we bring town reports.
Yeah.
The full report.
The full report, yeah.
Yes. And this past year, with a record number for recent years, we actually still had some left over, probably an entire box. So I don't know that the number of town reports is too many. But if you want to mail something out, depends on how elaborate you want to get.
I think that the town, the full-size thing could be available wherever we're needing.
That, that is the case and will continue to be so. But if you want to mail out something extra because that isn't mailed, then that's what I need to budget for.
Right.
Yeah, there was discussion last year of mailing something to everybody.
Well, I was thinking just the actual warrant articles that are approved. What do you think?
That's kind of, I weren't, maybe weren't in description. So where we have, the reason I say weren't in description is where we have potentially some really long planning articles because of the, what the feds are going to require us to do on the flood language. We might have to make that a little more succinct to make it reasonable and keep people's attention. Because you want them to get the gist of each article and then invest their time in reading stuff that really interests them. I mean, I read the whole book, but I'm not a very fun person.
I think I would recommend the warrant with an explanation that the town report has explanations that can be picked up here. You can also find that online.
Well, that's a good idea.
Wants to read the explanation part because that's just going to get a lot more pages and a lot more expensive.
Is there any practical way that people could opt in to having the paper report sent to them if they wanted? I don't think we'd get many requests for it, but I have had several people ask for that. Again, you know, who remember the days when everybody got one in the mail? Is there any practical way to make that happen on a, on a limited opt-in basis where if somebody asks for one? But I know that actually it's a lot of work for you guys.
If they ask for it, we will ship it to them at cost for postage. Because we're not doing a bulk mailing.
Right.
You know, it's first class, so we just charge them.
Could come to the town offices and pick it up?
They can come to the town.
Yeah, I get that's fair. Yeah, no, I'm asking, is there a practical way to offer the mailing service if somebody really wants that?
I, I have mailed out a few.
But like I said, it's at a cost because it costs us, I think.
We have online payment processing. Can we run it through?
There's not that many. There's, I maybe nail four to six.
Yeah, no, I don't think you're getting a lot.
And that, I have offered that for, since we stopped mailing them.
I physically drop some off for people who ask because it seems easier to take a stack and hand them out than to ask you guys. I mean, just part of being a good neighbor.
And we can talk to a few places around town to see if we can put a few there. And if more, we can get them more.
Sounds good to me.
Do you want to do the one?
Very good on this?
So.
That's, yeah, and very clear. And the most important thing is that people understand how to get the other information that explains it.
Oh, you could put a QR code. I mean, for real though, because now you don't have to have an app to read the QR code, right? If you have a smartphone, it is smart and it just knows. So just to make it, you have to like type in something really cumbersome, you know, put the cumbersome link, but also put the QR code to make it a little bit. Then put a link that says if you want to join one of our committees. Sneak it right in there.
Okay. We'll go on to the calendar cost discussion.
Kind of the same discussion. I had put this out to the select board before we went through the process of putting the calendar together this year. I got enough mixed reviews and we were late on time anyway, that we just decided to, to charge forward and see. But it's really the, the same discussion. We, yes, wanted to start moving forward with how useful is it? How many people are using it? We did do better this year on cost, the out-of-pocket cost is going to be somewhere in that six hundred and fifty dollar range this year, which is good. It does take approximately eighty hours of staff time to put it together, which is a significant cost for the town. But wanted to have the discussion of how useful it was. Was it a good use of town resources then?
Speaking for myself, it's essential.
I was gonna say, I, you guys know how much I love paper, but that is one of the few paper items I actually, it's just kind of shocking. But it hangs on my wall in glory and gets all of our notes on it.
Yep.
So it's not just because I do stuff in town. It's also because I've always been active. So even when I was, I was on other, you know, things, I looked to see, you know, when's town meeting, you know, so. And I know there's the trash magnet, so the trash magnet's one. But like, it's nice to see the bar. You're like, oh, I'm on this week. It's trash week. And trash week's like adult Christmas. So it really is.
You do live a little out of the way.
I do. I don't want to. And otherwise they maybe put it in my vehicle inside my car.
Doug Smith, if you're retired like I am, it's an essential thing. We're in trash weekend. I'm always losing track of which weekend I'm on this.
Well, we do have magnets coming, but we're just little magnets. So there's that.
But I wondered, just in general, do we slightly raise the price for advertising to offset, right? I mean, does everything cost more? So do we increase the price for advertising? And in terms of staff time, there, I'm, I'm not saying you don't do a great job because that, that's not. But if we want to preserve some staff time, are we, do we consider paying an agency to do it and increase fees accordingly, get a quote and have it done so that this is an offset, right? Like there are people who do these calendar things. I'd say for a living and maybe they have some flashy tool we don't have, but I don't know. Because I know staff time is very valuable.
But it's, it's nice that it, it's sort of personalized, you know, very much the town of Bigfield, photographs by citizens.
I think you could give them mostly items and I'm not saying it won't take any staff time, but it might.
There's a lot of useful information on it.
I like seeing the pictures my neighbors took, honestly. I look at them.
We need to do it soon.
How do you feel about the calendar?
I love the calendar. And I like the photo contest aspect of it. I think it's had a nice community building feel to it. It's nice to have a tangible way to sort of promote the town and, and various places and around town. And I, I think people really enjoy it. Yeah, that's my feel, whether the photographers are just getting information from it or, I really like it.
I have yet to meet someone who says, no, I don't like the town calendar.
But we're willing to hear it if you know that, right?
Okay. Have you heard enough?
Yes. Isn't that funny? No, that's not that, I mean, that's not.
And, and we're all people who use laptops every day. And, and we're all people who use laptops every day, you know, but there you go.
I have one hanging in my office.
So do I, but I don't have one at my house. I just use my phone.
Okay, next, there's the acceptance of donations to Meskoma Lakeside Park Fund of $1,350 in aggregate.
I move acceptance with thanks.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So administrative items. Okay, that's all just for our signatures. Other business to come before the Board of Selectmen, public comments. Seeley.
I just wanna comment on the new, the, uh, the report, town report.
Yes.
I think, um, I think it's so important since the beginning of the town report, that it was the one size, the small size. And I think it's a his, it's history, and it's at all possible, we could get it back to the, the size it was and get rid of a lot of that stuff we don't need. Last year, we had everything explained six thousand ways. You know, that was a big deal, but I think we could get it down again, because it just has everything we need, the budget, it has who's born, who died, and, I mean, that's, that's good history, and people like to keep that. And, um, I like to see, go back to the.
The large size.
Yeah.
Oh, you want the small.
We, we want large so people could read.
Oh, you want the small size?
Yes.
She wants the little one.
Was more in it or not?
With less.
Just the small, the.
Okay.
She doesn't like the larger format.
That's fine.
Doesn't fit with the other ones.
All right.
It's nice, but with the spreadsheets that we have now that we didn't have centuries ago, it, they're harder to read.
They're like the one I came to.
Yes, they're like that.
Yeah. Well, we'll take that under advisement. See how many of us wear glasses? Yes.
This is one of those, I don't know if we could do anything about it, but from Lockhaven Road, on Shaker Hill Road, from Lockhaven Road down to Crystal Lake Road, they replaced those telephone poles three years ago, and they still haven't taken out the old one.
No, they haven't.
And we had the same issue down at St. Paul Boulevard, and they stayed there, and this, they did that prior to COVID, so it's been at least three years that those dead poles have been sitting there with one light on.
Are we giving them the same letter we did last time?
Well, the problem with that is the state road. No, I. Last time was a town road.
I wrote the chief of operations in Texas from Consolidated Communications, an engineer here who called the engineer of this area. She told me back and said they were working on.
Okay.
I will get in touch with her again, and I will copy.
All right, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, um.
I make a motion, Mayton.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
We have things assigned?